Paul, can you hear us?
This is Paul. I can hear you loud and clear.
Awesome. Thank you, Paul.
You can hear it?
Yeah. A little quiet. Do we need to turn up the sound in the room? Okay. Can you hear me now over there?
Yeah, I can still hear you, Commissioner, and I love the new flag behind you.
How about now? Do your folks in the room, can you hear better now? Okay, sounds great. So, we like start our mission meetings with a prayer reading or thought, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So, we typically like to pick on victims from the audience for those two things. So, do we have anybody from the audience who would like to share a prayer, reading, or thought with us? Mayor Mendon, how very nice of you to volunteer. And we'd also need someone for the Pledge of Allegiance after the mayor leads us in either a prayer, reading, or thought. Anybody for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ben, thank you. Okay, Mayor?
Thank you. I couldn't do two in a row. Our dearly Father, we're grateful for this day. We're grateful for the opportunity to be together in this great county of Utah and discuss the people's business. We're grateful for all the many blessings that we receive in our daily lives, but also the blessing of living here. We're grateful for all the residents, county, and cities that take care of each other, especially in their time of need, which we've been in the last few weeks here. We ask a blessing to be upon us as we move forward with the items of business here, that we may be watched over, and we may be able to make the best decisions for this area. Again, we're grateful for all of our blessings and has to watch over us as we head home after this and say so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
If you're able, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right. The first thing that we have on our agenda is an Employee of the Month recognition. So, this month, I've got the honor of recognizing someone who was an employee of mine for two and a half years, and I'm really excited to announce that Tad Rathmussen is our Employee of the Month. So, as Tad comes up, and we're going to ask him to say a few words, I just wanted to highlight a few of the things that were pointed out in the nomination, and these are things that I can definitely verify that Tad does. And I think he's incredibly proactive, and he's always looking to help other people. He has taken the lead to create purchasing training for the county. He has Q and A sessions, develops a Reliuse training on purchasing, and is always willing to help people with any questions they have, anything that has to do with purchasing or contracts. He's always incredibly helpful. He even proactively reaches out to departments to let them know when contracts are expiring so that they have the ability to proactively work on that. And more than anything else, I think the key driver is that Tad is always willing to help other people, and he's always looking to try to find ways to streamline other people's jobs and make their jobs easier. So, Tad, you've been with us, what, 24 years, almost 25 years as a county? And that is a long time that we've had the honor and privilege of working with you, and thank you for always being proactive, for always looking to help your fellow coworkers, and for always being willing to go above and beyond and do things outside of your job description. I mean, I know, one of the things that I learned when I first came to the county in 2019 is that even something as simple as picking up everybody's mail and delivering it to their door so that they don't have to do that themselves, you were always, didn't matter, no job was too small or too big. You were willing to tackle it. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I do have to ask, in your 24 years, almost 25 years here at the county, which job have you held that has been your favorite?
My current one. Get to interact with the people and just help them, uplift them, help them succeed and do better.
You do fantastic at that. So, with that said, we've got, we have a certificate and a couple of other little goodies here for you. So, we'll come around and take a picture right there with you. It's right here, so don't forget to grab it because there are certificates and stuff in there. Okay, next, we do have a public hearing on the agenda. So, we will need to have a motion to open that public hearing. This is a public hearing to discuss amending the 2023 budget and the county's general fund and various other budgetary funds, revising the county's estimates of revenue, revising budget appropriations of county departments, and transferring unencumbered or unexpendited appropriations balances from one department in a fund to another department in the same fund.
I'll make a motion if we open a public hearing. Second?
We moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, that passes three zero. We're now in the public hearing. If anybody that wants to come and make any comments on that. All right, seeing none. Do we have any online? All right.
Motion to go out of public hearing.
I can second that.
We moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, that passes three zero. We are out of public hearing. Next, we're going to build our consent agenda. So, I think we'll build the consent agenda, and we'll do it right after because then people can go if we don't.
Okay.
You want me to stay?
You got it.
Yep. So...
Just to clarify, sorry, Rob Morita, County Attorney's Office. That last motion, was that to close the public hearing or just to go out of it? I just want to clarify that.
Close it? Is that what you'd like me?
Well, yeah, if you leave it open, it means that you would continue to have discussion on the issue. If you just go out of it and go to the agenda, you're leaving it open. So, was the motion, clarify, that motion was to close?
To close it.
Yes. That was the intention behind it.
Okay. All right, let's build our consent agenda. We need to hold item number one. Any other items on one through 10?
Number six.
Six.
All right, we'll hold six. Right, 11 through 20?
11.
And we need to continue item number 15. Do we know how long? Is that for one week or is that?
June 7th.
Hold it until June 7th? Okay. Or continue until June 7th?
And number 14 is to receive the recommendations of the top two of the three. But I don't know if we want to discuss it, number 14 or not on that one.
Or do you want to just, are you cool with just receiving the top two of the three?
Yes.
And I am as well. So, we'll do that on consent. On number 14, we're receiving the top two of three. As recommended by the committee.
Right. And number 17, it's, sorry, the date's there, May 31st, so we're good with that.
Yep. Okay, 21 through 30? Okay.
Number 28, I'd like to have a little clarity. I brought this up a year ago. I want to reemphasize this particular one. 28.
So, you wanted to hold that then?
Number 28, yes.
Commissioners, can I go back to number 16 regarding the vacation of the portion of the Alberta Townsite plat? If you, as part, you can leave it on consent, but approve that condition upon receiving a deed for Alberta Slant Road. I think that's, we had that discussion before, that the church would deed us to Alberta Slant Road in exchange for what we're doing in the Alberta Townsite.
So, conditional on deed of Alberta Slant Road.
Yes, thank you.
Got it.
Yep. Thank you. Okay, 21 through 30, I think you said 28. Okay, 31 through 40?
39, that's aerial spraying. It's not for mosquito, it's for weed spraying.
Okay.
Just to clarify that one. But I don't have any that I want to hold otherwise.
No. Okay, and then 41 through 46?
I'm good with those.
Okay, and then we'll hold 47 and 48 and 50 as stated, and strike 49. Okay, let's... Hey, we're ready, if you want to review fours, Alice?
Okay, I have us holding regular agenda items, number one, six, 11, continuing 15 to June 7th. We are approving 16 with the condition of receiving the deed for the Alberta Slant Road. Holding 28. And then, as far as closed meetings, we'll hold as stated, 47, 48, striking 49, and holding 50 as stated.
That's what I had as well. That works.
I'm good with that.
Okay, we're going to change the order a little bit because we have some people here for public hearing, for, I mean, for public hearing, for public comment, and we don't want them to have to wait through all of the work sessions until the end. So, we're going to move public comment to this point in time. So, we'll open up a public comment if we have anybody for public comment. So, for public comment, we do typically have two minutes per individual. And then, for rules, we don't respond, but you give us information and then we don't respond.
Okay. My name is Sandy Hanks. I live in Lehigh, behind the Lehigh Farmer's Market. I am the backyard neighbor to the north end. So, there's three or four neighbors behind her. Anyway, I'm in the northwest corner. I look out my kitchen window, having dinner, and I see the trailer there pulling something out from under his trailer, and I'm looking at it going, what the heck is that? And he's shaking it over his head down below, and I'm like, what is going on here? My son-in-law comes over to sit down with his plate of food, and he goes, he's dumping his raw sewage. And I'm like, what? We have raw sewage being dumped like 30 feet from my kitchen window? I can see it loud and clear. I can read the license plate on the back of the trailer, and I write it down. I can read the license plate on the back of his truck, and I wrote that down. And I called the Utah County Health Department the very next morning, because it's Sunday night at 6:00, and that's happening. By that afternoon, Monday afternoon, he was gone, but I'd already contacted the county health department at 8:00 a.m. So, that's a huge concern. She called, Dorothy called me, Dorothy Durant, the owner of the farmer's market, called me two and a half weeks later to let me know that that was not raw sewage that I saw, that it was gray matter, because she was out there that day, two and a half weeks later, to rake with her tractor, and she did not see any raw sewage. That must have been gray matter that I saw. And I'm like, Dorothy, there's rain and snow, you know, I don't know what's going on. This weekend, we had more trailers move onto the property in that corner, and they've set up camp tables, awnings, everything. They moved the trailer away from the back of, over, 20 feet over, and we now have a garbage pile dump that's 48 feet long. So, if each panel of my fence is eight feet, there's six of them long with a garbage dump there that's as tall as the fence. And it goes around to the north side of the barn, too. We now have raccoons crossing the street to get to the farmer's market. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Sandy. And just state your name when you start. Thank you.
I'm Katie Johnston. I've been in contact with all of you. My main concern is that there are registered sex offenders living in those RVs illegally. After Larry Jarvis was arrested, he was actually in my neighborhood, two houses down, while my children were outside riding bikes. I was, of course, right there by them. And... My neighbor, Tim Ponce, is the one that is housing them. He has made mention to one of the neighbors that that is his goal, is to fill those trailers with ex-convicts or recovering addicts to help them, give them a second chance at life. And I, one of my hopes is that every trailer is investigated and to find out who's living there. And also, just some advice of how we can, what we can do to help our community feel safe. People that don't live in that area may not know what's going on there, and they may not know that there are sex offenders living there. I did stop one time and asked, or told the people walking in that there are sex offenders, and they kept walking, and that's their choice. But are we able to go and picket? Are we able to go and hand out flyers that say there are, you know, sex offenders? There are, this is going, this is what's going on here, to help keep our community safe. We just would like some feedback on the next steps that are being taken to help us feel safe in our brand-new homes. We built these two and a half years ago. I didn't pay half a million to live next to an illegal RV park. We are very grateful for all the work that you guys have all done already. We know that you've all done something for us, and we're grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Katie.
I'm Kylie Heseltine. And I had to type something up because I can't just talk. But I want to say thanks, first of all, because I know you guys have been working on this. We drive you guys crazy, I'm sure, so thank you for putting up with us and for what has been done so far. We just request the continued push to clean this area up, especially the removal of the RVs that are still on this property. There have been multiple safety issues, such as registered sex offenders and arrests, and an attempted murder recently on this property. And these things give the neighboring homeowners a very unsafe environment to live and raise our families. And and that's it, I guess, thanks.
Thank you.
Kylie.
Hi, Victoria Gosling here, I'm one of the neighboring neighbors as well to the farmer's market. And, you know, as everybody said, thank you for working with us and putting up with all of our phone calls and emails and, and all that, but we're really just the safety, the safety of the whole thing, not just for the people that live in the surrounding areas, but the people that are living there. I mean, at one point, and maybe even still continually, they have running electrical cords from trailers to the home. That, that home can't be, can't be generating enough power for all these trailers. I mean, what happens when we have an electrical fire, and they have all this garbage, all this dry weed? And the whole thing sets up in flames, you've got neighboring, backyard neighbors, their houses are in danger themselves, who knows how far this, this fire could spread if it was to catch on fire? So, you know, and we've got the registered sex offenders that, you know, Larry's now gone, there is still one that we are aware of, living in one of Tim Ponce's trailers, that he's counseling for drug abuse. To our knowledge, he has licensing in family and marriage therapy. To my understanding, you need to have a license to help with recovering drug addicts, I could be wrong, I'm not sure. But, you know, what I reiterated, it all is, comes down to the safety of everybody in the surrounding areas. Yeah, thank you for all your help.
Thank you.
Thanks, Victoria.
Anybody else, do we have anybody online, Alice? Okay, that'll conclude public comments, thank you so much for coming and, and putting your comments on the record. We appreciate your feedback. All right, we will next move to our first work session, the quarterly report from the Public Defender Association.
Good afternoon, Benjamin Young, Financial Manager for the Utah County Public Defender Association. So we've been asked to quarterly present on, on where we're at as far as budgets and as far as caseloads. So the agenda for today's meeting is we'll discuss the caseloads for quarter one, 2023. And it's, we've seen a significant increase in the number of cases and the number of hours that are, that are required to provide effective assistance of counsel. We'll then discuss the budget at a high level for, for the entire entity, and then in the categories of employee-related expense, program expenses, general and administrative expenses. And it's not clicking, there it goes. And Josh stepped out, so I will cover this. So in, in summary, what this is, this table shows the, the case type. And then the second column is whether it's a felony first, a felony second, felony third. Under the felony column, the number of those cases that we were assigned. FH is, is felony hours, so that's based on the case study that was done on a national level. How many hours it should take a defense attorney outside of court time to prepare for that case? In order to provide effective assistance of counsel. And then FT would be the total number of hours by multiplying the number of cases times the number of hours. Oh, thanks. Misdemeanors, same way, number of misdemeanors that have been assigned to the public defenders, the number of hours that those should take, and then multiplying those two together to get the total hours of effect, that would be required to provide effective assistance of counsel for the number of cases that were assigned. And then to the, to the far right, we, we add those together to kind of show number of cases and number of hours. And, and what's concerning, particularly in the increase in drug cases, which, which Josh will talk to, but kind of at a high level, the, the total number of hours is significantly higher this year, it's, it's almost the same number of hours of work that have been assigned to us as was given both quarter one and quarter two of 2022. So I'll let Josh kind of get into the, into the details of, of that, and colloquially what we're seeing from the defender perspective in the courtroom.
Right, and just to clarify, the, the numbers, you know, the hours required, the state of Utah did a study, but hasn't released actually an hour amount, so these are kind of just an example, and recently I did attend a seminar where they're looking at revising the national guidelines that have been in place since 1973, which was just, you know, 150 felony cases and 400 misdemeanors. And going, moving toward more something like, like we do here, where each type of case is broken down, there's a, an hour amount that's usually just an average. And so like Ben said, this year, we're significantly higher. In fact, just looking at, at the first quarter for the last few years, we're more than double the amount of cases that we've opened up. And to be clear, when we say there's, you know, you see the number of felony or misdemeanor, those are separate cases, so this is just the lead charge, so the highest charged offense in a particular case. And so these are all-
There's multiple charges, we're just, we're just tracking that.
Right, so of the 815 cases that we opened, that translates to roughly 20, or 2,381 total charges. But what we're reporting here is just the, the highest level of offense in a particular case that, that we've opened, and breaking it down by that case type as well. But if, if we're, like Ben said, from first quarter and second quarter combined last year, the total number of hours was right around 27,000, and so we're near that number just from the first quarter of this year. If we're looking at the to, total number of cases that were opened in that particular given period of time, this year it was 815. Last year, that same period of time was 390. And then the previous year was 167, and then 2020 was 348. Additionally, right before coming over here, I ran the numbers up to today at about 140, as of 1:41 PM. And we are at, we've opened 1,192, so an additional 377 cases just for the, the month of April and the first few days of, of May. While there have been a significant increase in the drug cases, and I think that's partly due to no longer diverting cases to the justice court, you know, we're just seeing increase on, in the number of cases in total. We've always had a, a higher number of drug-related offenses, that's typically the, the majority of the cases that we see. But, you know, you can look at the numbers and see which types of cases are demanding a lot of time, so. The 815, number two of cases that we've opened, doesn't include the orders to show cause, those are cases that had been previously opened, and there's an allegation of a violation of probation. And so those require us to appear in court and potentially have hearings to take evidence, things of that nature. And for this first quarter, we did open 327 orders to show cause. 172 of those were felony orders to show cause, and then 155 were misdemeanor. So we, we've seen a significant increase, there may be multiple variables as to what's causing that increase. Regardless, that's just where we're at, we've just seen that, that huge increase in the number of cases and the amount of time that that demands on us, so. I, I don't know if you have questions, I'm happy to answer those. Okay, thanks.
And, and one last thing to highlight on this slide before we move on to the next one, is the, based on the, the 28 attorneys that are funded by the county and the IDC grant collectively to cover this, it, it's, in order to provide effective assistance of counsel for this number of hours being required, dividing that out to each attorney is just over 60 hours per attorney, so. A very demanding schedule and a very high workload, and, and something we're, we're going to come back to the commission to look to, to help us with that as we continue funding discussions for next fiscal year, so. For this fiscal year, this is our actual expenses as of March 31st, so for the first quarter, we should be at 25% to be on budget. You'll see that we're, we're fairly close, a little bit conservative on employee and general administrative, and a little bit higher of expenses in, in program expenses. As I get to the detail on those, I'll, I'll kind of walk through the, where those funds are being spent. Unless there's any questions at a, at a high level before I move on. Excellent. So employee-related expenses, the, the biggest thing to note here is that there's, there's a spike in health savings contributions, because those are made at the beginning of the year. But everything else is, is in line with where we would expect to be at this point in the quarter. We do anticipate with the, with the increased workload from the increased number of cases, we will need to bring on additional attorneys. And, and, you know, in, in second quarter and third quarter, we'll, we'll see an increase in the, in the employee-related expenses.
These are Q1 numbers, right?
Correct. On the next slide, program expenses, again with the increased number of cases, we're seeing an increase in the experts, the witnesses, the investigators, the transcripts and tapes. All, all of the court-related expenses obviously have a corresponding increase as the case number, the number of cases increases significantly. And pending any questions, we'll go on to the next slide. Finally, our general and administrative, as a 501(c)(3) entity, we always like to have as much of our expense as possible related to the program, you know, related to providing public defense for the county of Utah. And so we try to, to keep these as, as manageable as possible, and we're, we're well below national standards of, of being in appropriate amounts that are expensed on general and administrative and, and within budget of what we had forecasted, so. That concludes the the budget portion and, and the overall number of our cases, pending any questions from the commission, or if there's anything you'd like us to, to dive deeper into, we're happy to make ourselves available.
Did I pick up that the average caseload hours is 60 per attorney? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Make sure I got that correct.
I said it's not great, let me just zoom in on that, 62.6.
62.6 hours per case.
Historically tried to keep that below 50, it's just been such a rapid spike in the number of cases we were assigned this quarter, so.
Okay, okay.
And just to clarify, sorry, that, that number, and the numbers here on hours are just for case-related tasks. So going to court, preparing for court, researching, writing motions, client meetings, those types of things, they don't take into account training, you know, continuing legal education requirements, administrative duties and those types of things, these are just strictly handling a case, case specific, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. The next work session agenda is a follow-up public presentation from the November 9, 2022, regarding the 5th/5th to help fund maintenance and development of Utah County's city's roads and transit.
I'd like to invite UTA representative on this one, and then Richard afterwards, give your perspectives from UTA, what will do for Utah County specifically, and what you see as useful, and from our public works, your perspectives from this, if it were to be adopted by Utah County.
Okay, my name is Jeff Acerson, I'm a trustee of Utah Transit Authority, representing Utah and Twillie Counties. There are three trustees, they represent other areas, so. My-
And prior to that, you were a mayor, and prior to that-
Former mayor.
Stallward of the community.
On the public health, on the county, you know, I've been around. Longtime resident of Utah County, live in Linden now. You know, the legislature has given a tool for counties to use to enact a local sales tax. We all know, county knows, cities know, the public knows, that things don't operate in thin air, you've, you've got to fund them some way. And they have appropriated, they've changed it this last legislative session to actually incorporate, rather than the full 5th/5th to be transit-related, they've divided it up between municipalities, counties, and transit. So with that in mind, Mountain Line Association of Government have, they've run some numbers, potentially what, if that were enacted by the county commission, would generate anywhere between 28 and 30 million annually, based on sales tax, and that could vary. If people stopped buying, and the sales, the local option is not on food, it's just on the things that people have discretionary opportunities to purchase.
Not on groceries, but if it was like McDonald's or some other grocery-
Yeah, fast food or restaurant prepared services, it would be on that, that's correct. So as that's divided up, and I think the legislator, legislature realized that they needed to spread it across different agencies, so there would be the wherewithal to enact that. They see it as a funding source for the local, the county, and the transit, and the municipalities. I don't know, Utah County's growing, it's growing faster than most people want, but the reality of it is, it is, and we need to put the infrastructure in, and we need to have funding sources to do that. So from UTA's perspective, we want transit down to the South County as far as front-runner, we want it up in the Northwest, we want it here in the local area with UVX. There are many things that a funding source can help move forward and put that infrastructure in. This sales tax could be used for operating and for capital expenditure, so it's a wide-open discretionary appropriation that can be used based on the needs and, and what the agencies, everyone included, Mountain Line Association of Government, UTA, the county, the mayors, we all come together and we try to help in that planning process and prioritize where those money should go, so. Does that help?
Yeah, it does, so basically for every five bucks we spend on discretionary purchases, there'd be a, be a penny added to whatever sales item we're buying. And of that penny, a fourth of it would go to cities, divided out roughly $7 million or so to all the 24 cities, per, on a per capita basis. Another seven something million dollars would go to the county, the other half penny would go to Utah Transit for about the first three years.
First three years, and then after-
Inside Utah County.
That's correct.
And then after that would be for roads, infrastructure, planning for future-
Well, what would happen, it would go into the TTF, so a portion, half of that would go to the state, into the TTF, which is the transit fund, which goes to the state, but it would be required that it would be utilized here in the county still.
And the first three years, if it were to be enacted, would stay specifically to UTA for Utah County, and then they would split that half penny into additional court. We'll split it in two, it'd be a quarter would go to the TTF for state planning for Utah County specifically, correct?
It'd have to still be utilized here in the county.
Okay.
Any questions?
I think we've talked in depth, you and I, about this.
We have, we've, this has been a long haul, at least trying to make sure we understand it, and what the effect might be and what the opportunity might be, and I just, it's your decision, it's an opportunity for you to address the growth-
I've asked that you come back, just so in public, we could go in a little bit more, comb a little bit more detail.
I'll come back as often as you need me, so.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, thank you.
We appreciate your support and your help, thank you. All right, the next we, oh wait, no, Richard is coming now.
I don't need to talk with-
He's, he's important, too.
Yes.
Richard Nelson, Public Works Director, Commissioner Sakovic asked me to talk for just a minute about what, what the added funding would do for Utah County, specifically for our roads budget. As you're aware, we have two or three different sources of funding that we have for, for roads, our main one being our, our B-road money that comes from the gas tax. We also have the, the third and fourth quarter cents that, that help with projects and, and larger items, we just actually did a change order a little bit ago on your consent agenda. For one of those large projects, Lofer Mountain Parkway in the Salem area. Um one of the things that that we see with our our road funding, uh because of added costs, because of of. Uh more traffic and and more demand on our our roadway system, uh we simply don't keep up with with the the funding that's 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 currently available. Uh right now, for the funding that we have available for our road maintenance, we're hitting about our seventy-five percent mark of where we'd like to be to keep a. Uh a routine uh maintenance, uh surface treatment on the roads, reconstruction every so many years, uh things like that. We we fall short about four and a half or five million dollars a year, if we look at, if we were to try to do the optimal. Of what would be done for the roadways, that doesn't account for any of the the expansion of the roadways that we have. Um many of our our roads out in the rural area, they were they were gravel roads and, oh, fifty years or so ago. Uh they were chip sealed over the gravel, and they've been chip sealed several times since then. Uh there's not a a true pavement section in there, so if we get all the added traffic with, whether it's it's new county traffic or in the adjacent cities. And now you have the traffic running on the old county roads, they simply don't hold up to the to the traffic loads. Uh so we do have to do a lot of of work that way with with pavement, um reconstruction and maintenance, to try to keep those in a a good usable. Condition for the the county residents, so.
Uh will you talk to us about um the cost of deferred maintenance on some of these roads? If we're only meeting the seventy-five percent mark, that is slightly concerning to me.
It it is, and and it's it's something that we've talked about over the past several years with various commissions. Um it for for every dollar we can spend on on routine maintenance at the optimal time. If we don't do it then, it can cost us up to four dollars. In the future, as we as we let the, there there's a graph that shows how how the the road section deteriorates over time, so if you start off a new road, it's up to one hundred. If we can do the routine maintenance in the eighty to eighty-five percent range of that pavement. And spend a dollar on that that pavement, we bring it back up to in the mid nineties, and we can keep doing that every every seven or eight years. Then that holds up at a at a higher rate, we can run that pavement out a lot longer. If we let it drop off to where we're down in the the forty or fifty percent of that pavement life. Then we're now having to do a reconstruct that's, you know, three or four times as much money uh to to do a reconstruction on that road. And we we get fifteen years or so out of that reconstruct, so what we're looking at, Commissioner, to maybe to kind of answer your question is is. Oftenly, we'd be in that seven-year timeframe for a treatment, we might be looking more like eight or nine years is where we're hitting that, so. We're a little farther down that curve, so we don't get quite as much of a a benefit back. So what we'd we would be looking at is try to tighten up that that timeframe so that we're doing those surface treatments on a more regular basis.
Okay.
Do you interact with the city public um folks very much on the same topic?
Pretty frequently.
Pretty frequently, I gather from cities that they're having similar issues that they can't keep up. Yes, the state collects or has been collecting about one point six billion dollars for roads and gas tax and that. We get pieces of from BNC roads, et cetera.
Right.
But after they're all said and done, it's already been called for at various locations, and that's why this particular item came up in two thousand eighteen. Has been brought back to our attention last summer, and we're still talking about it now.
Yep, the 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 monies that come through the BNC Road Fund for the the counties and the cities are typically well under what we what you would need to to maintain your roadways. Um many of the cities uh supplement that with general fund money, uh to try to keep that up in a a level where it needs to be. We use the fourth quarter cent as what we backfill that with, uh so there's 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 other funding sources there. But it typically does not get you to the level it needs to be to have those roads really they should be at.
Okay.
Tom, could I inject something as a a former mayor with respect to roads? Because that was something I dealt with and and proactively worked on a lot. And and Mayor Manhala, feel free to correct me or Richard, but the maintenance that you do is a five to seven is is optimal, you can go past that. But if you do that maintenance, it's like about twenty cents a square foot. If you wait and have it go off the curve, the fix ranges from three to six dollars a square foot, so it's fifteen to thirty times cheap, uh more expensive. To let your roads fail.
Yep, that's correct.
Um and uh this, our city was getting about five hundred thousand a year from the BNC funds. And that was pretty constant, it moved up a little bit, there was a bump a few years ago, but that doesn't change, but our cost to maintain at optimal. Was over a million a year, and we we ended up passing a road fee because we'd gotten so far behind, we had to play catch up.
Yep, so that's another option.
And that was eighteen fifty a month, which is a lot of money, but the we informed the residents and they bought into it. Um so this, taking advantage of this now and being proactive, is gonna save the county and the cities. A lot of money in the future, um we'll end up spending, or Highland would have ended up spending about sixteen to twenty million dollars. Let me amend that, twelve million dollars, ten to twelve million dollars over the course of the next. Five to seven years, where we otherwise would have only needed to spend about five or six, so. It the the savings that Richard's talking about are real, real, and the cities are are painfully experiencing that as well.
Brings up a good point, the the B and BNC road monies have been fairly consistent over the past ten years. If I look back ten years, we were paying about forty, forty-five dollars a a ton for asphalt. Right now, we're paying ninety to ninety-five dollars a ton for asphalt, yet our B road money is basically even to what it was ten years ago. So that's that's another challenge that we have, so.
We have, obviously, we have less people driving on the roads.
Uh yeah, yeah, all the time. That's that's Jeff, yeah, we tried to get more people in the buses. Any other questions for me?
No, I appreciate it, I just wanted additional dialogue in public, so thank you for that.
No, absolutely, it's very insightful, thank you, I appreciate that. Did you have anyone else that you wanted to talk, when you get there? Okay. Um our next work session item is a presentation and discussion of potential flooding protection district.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Dale Air County Attorney's Office. Um one of you, or maybe more of you, have asked us to present some information about a a potential flood protection district. Um it it is that season. So what we've done is we've broken up this into two parts, I have a memo I prepared for you, uh talking about possible entities, possible ways to to organize this 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 effort. And then Richard Nelson will join us also, and he'll talk to you more about what he hopes we could do, things that we could do uh to mitigate floods. Now, we could probably mitigate and protect ourselves from floods without infrastructure, without another entity. Um you'll see what Utah County is doing well this year compared to to northern counties. But there are some reasons you might want to look at a legal entity, um. What I've learned is, when you create something like this, a special service district or an interlocal. You're you're throwing time, effort and money at a problem, and it will continue to get worked on. Rather than just waiting for the problem to come up again, so you know, we could we could deal with floods this year, and we could wait another twenty years and deal with them again. Or you could you could create a system, a a process, procedure and people to be working on that in the meantime.
So like in theory, we would have a sandbagging machine that was ready instead of one that we had to order and we're still waiting on.
Exactly.
In theory.
Exactly.
I don't mind breaking my back occasionally.
Um flooding is everyone's problem, it's a long-term commitment, and I think one of the benefits is. Um you're dealing with it, if you if you create some kind of entity, you're dealing with it when time is on your side during the dry years.
Right.
Anyway, we were throwing out three different possible entities, there may be others, but these are kind of the the most popular. And I've given you the memo that that you can refer to as the pros and cons as you think through this. And and as you as you watch the flooding this year, as you listen to Richard tell you what he hopes to see that we could do. That will probably inform you of your decision of what you would like to create, um number one, a le- an interlocal agency. Created by the legislative bodies, so the counties and the cities would have to get together, um it requires an agreement. Of course, you know, sometimes we agree, sometimes we don't. Um I think this is the third time we've talked about a a flood protection district in the history of Utah County. Um Salt Lake um had problems with the first go around, uh Provo and Orem killed the second time. And um now we're kind of looking at maybe a South County entity and maybe a North County entity, and just deal more localized flooding problems. Um an interlocal would be funded by budgets and grants, it would be an ongoing thing, you as commissioners, councilman, and would be watching it uh on a yearly basis. Um there would be no separate organization, um that's one benefit, so there's not a separate organization that's tying up uh funds. Um no, there's no additional bureaucracy, no staff, and you would share the cost according to the use. What are the downsides to an interlocal? It requires a commitment of already stretched resources, okay, there you, there's not going to be an additional funding mechanism. Uh contractual obligations can be breached by subsequent policymakers. You enter into an interlocal agreement today, of course, your subsequent commissioners may not agree. And it requires contract negotiation and continued contract maintenance by lawyers. Um the second one, a special service district, um. These can be very localized, the good thing about the Special Service District Act is it specifically authorizes flood control as one of its uh statutory powers. Uh a special service district, the county commission has supervisory authority, so it kind of stays in your control a little bit more, uh which can be a good thing. It's created by resolution, not by contract and not by vote, so it's you who create it. Um the local funding would be tied to services in the geographic area, so with the special service district, you can say that. Um uh those benefiting from the flood protection, you know, the Spanish Fork, Salem, Pace and Santa Queen, Goshen area, they could pay for it. So that 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 tends to be a little bit more fair, um you can use bonds, levies, fees to pay the costs. It avoids jurisdictional and financial barriers that multi-entity organizations have, so. Yet in a local, you're gonna have cities and counties perhaps fighting. And it can ensure the continuation of efforts beyond one commission, so you create that, it will continue, as we see now, there are special service districts in the county that are are very old now. Uh the downside to special service districts, uh creates another layer of government. And and that's something we've been talking about recently with some some of our special service districts, you know, you can have too many of these. Um they're also a very transparent layer of of government, um you know, you're here every week, people are watching you, listening, coming. Um special service districts don't get that kind of attention, and so they're they're kind of hidden, and it requires a dedicated funding source, you know, that special service district can exist on its uh. Uh on its own. Um the third one, I I throw this out here because uh it's it feels like we're maybe moving towards more of these, they used to be called local districts until yesterday. Now they're called special districts, so you have special districts and special service districts, we're all special. But there are some that are special service and some just special. So the special is the old local district, and that's an independent entity, and so we don't have supervisory authority. We also don't have the li- as much liability or or uh requirement to fund the district, so. It's a possibility, removes the responsibility from the county, it's also independent of county and cities, which can be a good and bad, you know, it's independent. They may decide that this is how we're going to protect ourselves from floods, and it doesn't matter what you say, so. The cons, it requires a vote during the next election, a little bit harder to create, and it would have to be voted on. It has independent taxing authority, which to some people is terrifying, that you would have another entity out there taxing them. And uh it would control uh flood act, flood control unilaterally. So those are some ideas, when you talk flood protection district, you have to decide, well, what kind is it gonna be? Those are three, interlocal, special service or a special district, and or we just take care of it as we are taking care of it now. I, so far, Utah County's been doing good, very good, and so I'm going to turn the time over to the guys who take care of that and are responsible for that, Richard Nelson.
Thanks, Dale, appreciate that uh intro on on looking at the flood districts. Uh Dale mentioned this has been something that the county has looked at over the years, and I go back many years to my time at Spanish Fork City when Clyde Naylor was in the role I'm in today. Uh and he was trying to to push this through about twenty-five years ago, and it's been talked about quite a bit over that twenty-five years, but. So far, we've not had um any success in in moving along with it, uh this year's a good a good year to talk about it. Uh as you're aware, we've been doing a lot of work over the last uh few months in in flood preparation, uh the cities have been doing the same thing. Um one of the things, and and Dale from a legal side, close yours on this, we've been doing a lot of handshake agreements with the cities. Where where we we've been working a lot with Spanish Fork City out on the Spanish Fork River, uh having our our crews work together with each other. Uh bringing different pieces of equipment, different manpower, things like that, been working very well. Um the the challenge we have with this is that, like for this year, we've spent the last two or three months. Almost exclusively working on clearing river channels for the spring runoff. Well, that takes away from our our road maintenance and from our parks maintenance, and and we've been pulling, you know, all all sorts of people from our our public works office, and we've also had. Had our fire crews from uh Wildland Fire have been a part of that, helping us with with clearing those channels. Uh the cities are in in very much the same the same boat, we're 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 pulling resources from other areas that have to get put on hold while we do this. Right now, while we're in the in the middle of of flood season, if you will, um it's a lot of long hours and and we have. That that is pretty well exclusively what our roads crews are doing right now, um amongst many of our other crews as well. Um I think if we were to look at some sort of a a district of of some sort, whatever method you choose to go with, if any of these that Dale had talked about this morning or this afternoon. I think one thing it would do is it would give us that that routine preventative maintenance, we're we're clearing those channels on a regular basis. We're going in there in August when the flows are at their least and working on it instead of in, you know, January, February, March, when we're out there in the snow and. And trying to decide whether we need to be plowing snow or cutting trees in the river, that sort of thing, if we if we have that dedicated crew. Uh that we can go in and work on on those things, then when we get to these years that are that are like twenty twenty-three and we have a large flow of water. We're ready for them, we're, the the channels are in good shape, because they've been they've been worked on on a routine basis, and they've been inspected on a routine basis. It can be a lot more proactive rather than reactive, um I think that's kind of the the big thing that I see there. Now, whether we go into to just looking at flood control, which is kind of where I would like to see this go. Uh versus like a a storm drain um system district, I I don't think we want to go there, I. I don't think we want to get into the storm drain business, we let the cities handle that, they've got that utility, they've got it handled well. It does however impact our our stream channels, that's where those those stormwater systems discharge to, is indoor store or flood channels. Or the rivers and things like that, so it does need to be a cooperative effort with the cities, they need to be an integral part of it. How we set that up, I don't know what the best way is, that's that's a discussion probably for a different day than today, but. I think it's something that we'd like you to consider as the commission, and to uh look at at ways that that we can make this work and. And have a something that'll work good for the citizens of Utah County, so. Glenn, is there anything you want to add to what I've said? Okay.
Couple of questions for you.
Yes, please.
Are all cities as well-prepared as Spanish Fork was?
Um each of the cities that have a a major channel going through them have done work this year. I would say Spanish Fork is probably the most prepared of any of the cities in the county, from what I've seen. Many of the others have been doing work and they've been doing good work, uh but I think Spanish Fork has has the, they get the the gold star for doing the best.
So the question basically is, is the burden evenly distributed amongst the cities and the citizens? Or are we have, because we don't have some sort of a cooperative agreement, do we have some places that are kind of doing the bulk of the work for others?
So so using the Spanish Fork River as an example, it only flows through two entities, Utah County as an unincorporated uh area and Spanish Fork City. So the work along the Spanish Fork River has been the city and the county. As you look at, say, um the American Fork River, it's got an incorporated county, it goes through Highland, goes through American Fork, comes back into the county, and then back into American Fork before it dumps in the. In the lake, so it has an an additional city that it goes through. Um most of the the way our cities are are set up and where their boundaries are, and because our our stream channels are going from the mountain to the lake. They typically only flow through one city and then county area on one side or the other of them, that's the way most of them are, so. The county's kind of involved in all of them, where each individual city has typically one stream channel that they're dealing with on their own. So if 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 we had more flow, say, in the in the north end of the county versus the south end of the county. Maybe American Fork would be hit harder than Spanish Fork, just based on the on the snowfall, we're kind of seeing that across the state right now. That the Salt Lake County northward, it's probably gonna have more issues with with flooding than than we will hear Utah County southward. Uh this year, just because of the snowpack that's in the mountains, so it it's not always evenly distributed and and it does kind of. Get spread out amongst everybody, but not on a on an even basis.
So can I add something here?
Please.
Um like, I know up in American Fork Canyon, we have the Forest Service and UDOT are helping as well with the. The the this channel cleanouts and and getting ready, and I I don't know the other counties, I I was on a. A board that met monthly with the Forest Service and the National Parks and UDOT, and so I know there are a lot of agencies involved, and then some like. Ernie, you know Ernie really well, I'm sure, um he's been overseeing all of that, but they, it's it's not just, you know. He's been overseeing all of that, but they, it's not just, in the North County case, it's not just the cities, it's also UDOT and the Forest Service.
Correct.
I'm assuming is that the same?
It is the same throughout the county, yep.
When we met out along the Spanish Fork River in January or early February, I can't remember what it was, and some of the landowners and farmers that live along the Spanish Fork River, this was really a request from them, right? And, you know, story this week of an area along the Spanish Fork River, as we were conversing out there that day, you know, we're talking about the areas that they wouldn't let us into their backyards to be able to do work, right? Well, mayor declares a state of emergency, they're able to get in and do work on a property. That's the only area that's had sandbags touched with water along the river so far, you know? And it was critical that they got in and were able to get in and do, you know, what they needed to do along that section. And so I think this is just good planning and preparation, so that we're not always just running around being reactive.
Yeah.
Instead of proactive.
And I think from the county public works perspective, one of the things that we do see that we need there is is we do need additional resources, additional manpower. We can't assume that we can draw from our existing crews and not have the other things that we're tasked with doing suffer. You know, we've got to be able to try to do this on an ongoing basis. In order to do that, we've got to have additional crews to be able to do that, so.
I think you highlighted the key there is proactive versus reactive. An organization cannot simultaneously be a proactive organization and a reactive organization. And Utah County has traditionally been a reactive organization rather than a proactive organization. With the rate of growth that we're experiencing, we cannot continue to thrive the way we have and be a reactive organization.
Well, how many times have we talked over the last few weeks about the things that we've done since, you know, the last time we potentially flooded, right? And we had some rises in 2019, right? We adjust, we had some in 2011, we adjust, and then 83 and 84, everybody talks about, right?
And that's a good point, like with 2019, that was a flash flood event in July. That was one that came about in a matter of hours versus we're looking at this snowmelt, we've been planning for this for a few months. That flash flood sudden event, that, using the Spanish Fork River again as an example, last night it was running about 2,000 cubic feet per second. That 2019 event was 2,800? 2,560, so not quite as high as I thought, but another 20% above where we are right now. It only lasted for a few hours, but it was a significant event. We had some flooding down in the lower reaches of the Spanish Fork River, where it actually came out of the banks. But that's one of those things where if the channel was already in good shape and we have that event, it's much more likely to be able to take the flow than if we don't have that channel in good shape. Hey, thank you.
Richard.
Thank you. Moving on.
Thanks for your work on that Dale.
Yeah, thank you Dale. Looks like we've got more conversation and discussion there.
Yeah. So Mr. Rob Moore, do you have any direction for Dale that you'd like to go forward at this point, or you want to just?
I'd like to follow up with myself.
Yeah, I would accept whatever you guys think would be the best of the three options for a district. You know, where you guys really, you dial that in, and then I think we know we are behind this year's eight ball, but let's work towards something throughout the remainder of, you know, this year to where we can get in a good spot.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind a recommendation from both you and Richard, and ideally, those two recommendations would be the same.
What about contact with cities?
We coordinate through COG or MAG.
That's what I was going to say, COG, I wonder if we should put it on the COG agenda, that was my thought as well.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate that. All right, we will move to our regular agenda. Item number one, approve and authorize a signing of the resolution amending the 2023 Utah County budget.
Well, it seems like a million years since I've been here with you guys.
No, how have you been doing?
I'm doing well.
Good.
Getting better every single day.
We'd like to hear.
I'm Rudy Livingston, Budget Manager, and I'm here just to make a couple of introductory comments. Normally, our practice has been to wait until July for our first mid-year adjustment. But there have been some things that have happened this year, some things that have come up that we felt that it was probably prudent that we would have an earlier opening of the budget. But then we will also plan on coming back probably in July or August later on in the year. One of the concerns that we have at, you know, early on in the year like this, is we just don't have enough data to know where our revenues are going to end up. As of today, we're here in May, and thus far we have two actual sales tax reports for this year, because there's a delay on those. And so what we'll see is that any adjustments that we would be making today would be the result of an adjustment to use of fund balance, which isn't bad, because we've actually been prudent in putting our money away in our fund balance so that we can, you know, take care of things. Likely we will come back in July, August as well. We took information that came from our commissioners and from various departments throughout the county to put this information together. And so we'll go through this today. I know that since we put the schedule together and got this on the agenda, we've been contacted by a few other departments that have had some other adjustments and potentially they believe. And so if the commissioners are, you know, have a desire to discuss that today, that's obviously in your purview.
Well, maybe we should just start with, do any of us have any particular questions? I know that your department was very good at sending out a memo and proactively reaching out. I feel comfortable with the adjustments that we've had. I know that there were a couple of departments that weren't able to, you know, apparently they were dealing with like emergencies and flooding. And so we may need to do an amendment there. I think the biggest thing that I wanted to highlight on here, under the non-departmental, the $2 million of emergency mitigation, obviously that's moving money out of our fund balance so that we can utilize it for flood mitigation efforts for this year, that's why we have a fund balance, that's why we have those emergency funds. And doing this adjustment today instead of July allows us to have access to that money without having to declare a state of emergency in order to access it. So I think that's probably the biggest thing that we, obviously that's the biggest, the two biggest things are that, the emergency mitigation reserve, and that's expected, that's why we have it, that's not a big deal. And the other one was an adjustment to the public defender contract. Ironically, today they reported to us, and we can see why they needed that adjustment to the contract. So other than that, it's, you know, everything else combined doesn't even equal either one of those. And so I think calling those two out, the rest of them are minor corrections. I don't have any questions beyond that, I know that we do have the two expenses.
I mean, I might point out that that $2 million, it's not just going, we actually have a fund that's set up for handling insurance and risk mitigation, and it's our risk mitigation fund. So it's moving it over to that fund.
From the reserves over to that fund, and if we don't need it, we don't need it, but if we do need it, we have it available and ready. So, I mean, other than those two, there were minor adjustments. I don't have any other questions, my fellow commissioners, do either of you have any?
I have two others, Public Works has a $250,000 motor pool emergency.
Yeah. Yeah, what that is, every year we put money aside in motor pool for purchasing vehicles. They don't never know exactly the right, the exact amount. Well, we've had a lot of increases in costs. We had several positions in the Sheriff's Department, for instance, that were added as part of the final budget last year. And with each one of those, they budget for a vehicle and all the costs that are associated with it. And because of those increases, they're afraid that they might be running a little bit low on that this year, so they want to bump that up. Once again, this is one that will be spent if it's needed. And if it is needed, then those charges would be billed out to the individual departments that are purchasing the vehicle. So this is, it's a net zero adjustment in the motor pool fund, but it allows them to be able to buy the vehicles as they're needed for those different departments.
So it just makes it accessible, but.
Correct.
And if it's not used, it just goes back to fund balance.
Exactly. And the other one is that we've found that there's been some limitations in our emergency, what do we call it, our panic button system that we have here in the county. If there's an emergency in one of the offices and we maybe have somebody that's an unsavory person that's causing trouble, our system currently is not functioning, and they need an additional $10,000 to cover the cost of getting a new system.
Implementation.
Implementing that.
After the RFP, but yeah.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. And I was fine with either of those, so I don't have any other questions.
I had talked to county attorney, and we were talking about pre-trial services. He wasn't, he's still not prepared to describe what, how it's large of a team to begin it with. And so he's still researching, but that's going to come up, and I would imagine by the end of the summer. So we're going to have to keep that in mind, at least for 2024.
Okay, if not, if not another adjustment?
If not another adjustment, we'll see what the revenues look like and how ready, he's ready to implement this. But this will augment the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council efforts to reduce repeat offenders as well. So that's something that will likely come up in another few months. I see 20,000 for lobbyists, we already have lobbyists, what is this amount?
That's because when we decided to sign the contract for the three, we used the money from the economic development and from the PIO, but we were still 20,000 short for the three. Right, so this is just to finish out those, the existing contracts.
And the other one is the county minister, we had an update on the job description last evening. There's a lot of things that I see, and it looks like that the senior policy advisors are already doing, or the lobbyists will be doing, and as they get more used to working with us. So I'm unclear as to how we can narrow this down a little bit more before we actually approve that 107,000. And I'm wondering if we couldn't, I bring this up because I've been talking with my senior policy advisor, how do we separate the day-to-day administrative out of senior policy roles? Because I see the administrative interfering with her role as a policy advisor, should be out there engaged with our legislatures more effectively now with our lobbyists to make sure that whatever state statutes are developed, it has us in mind. And that senior policy advisor would have a key role in helping us to develop an approach to make sure that does support the county. So I see the value in this county minister concept. But I think the job description needs a little bit more work, and I'm wondering if we couldn't restrict that amount for now.
Yeah, we could approve it, but then obviously not add the staffing position until we had all those things worked out. Yeah, absolutely.
I need a little bit more time to digest that and work it out with you two and the civil division.
Yeah, we could approve that, and then it would sit there until there was a staffing plan. And then so the position would have to then come to a request on the staffing plan.
Yeah, and we want to get it right, I don't know if you've seen the things Ralph has asked us each to send separately, right? And I think I sent that a month ago, maybe, Ralph.
March 2nd, actually.
Right, and we, so I don't know that we've ever sort of circled the wagons back so that you understand my ideas behind, you know?
And that would all need to occur for an approval, for a final approval.
That would be great. Yeah.
Because I've been trying to understand how other counties have their, some call them executive secretaries, some call them county administrators, because what the word administrator means something to someone else differently than it does to others, and so that's, I'm just trying to narrow that down.
Understood.
And with this, what we're doing is we're allowing you the flexibility to do this, because if we don't budget this, then it can't be hired. If this amount is budgeted, then when the commission is ready to move forward, then there's money that's appropriated for this. So it allows that flexibility, it doesn't mean that you have to spend, you know, the whole amount. It doesn't have a job description tied to it, but it gives you that ability to spend when you have it all ironed out.
A key one that came to mind, because there is a third party that we've been part of for some time, the Tourism Tax Advisory Board, and your senior policy advisor has been a key lead on that. And I'm keenly aware of the hours she puts in on that, prior to, during, and then after. And then the follow-ups required for that, so there is a distraction for your senior policy advisor from the title. So that's what brings that to mind.
Yeah.
Why it may be necessary.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I think this just earmarks it for when we're ready.
Yep.
Can I inject, I mean, a comment? This was something I researched a few years ago, and Utah County is the only county in the state that does not have some kind of dedicated staff for the commission. In some places, they call them, like you said, county manager, county administrator, or executive secretaries. The last one to switch was Davis County, which was a few years ago. And they, there's, that is, I would consider that a best practice.
And that's okay, as long as your 25-year guys never leave, you know? People that have worked here for 25 years.
Right, they wouldn't just like up and leave us.
Would never ever be able to go and find other employment, you know, as long as they stay here.
Won't we just stab it a little?
And they never leave, then that's fine, but.
Right. My worry is when those people abandon us, then what do we do?
Guide the ship.
It's true. I will say though, it's illegal to have a county manager and a county commissioner form a government.
Right.
You can have a county manager and a council manager form a government.
An administrator that just does administrative duties.
You cannot have a manager. And so they can't take the place of, in a county commissioner form a government, you can't give away your powers to a county administrator.
Yeah, almost like we could never replace a 25-year attorney.
Good point, very good.
Right, yeah, these are great, these are great points, Rob.
That person will be nameless at this point, until the meeting's done, and then just before we cut off the feed, we'll rename what's going on here.
Yeah, that would be a terrible loss.
And a job description would identify what rules.
Yeah, and that's why Paul and I both revised that job description, to make it so that it would be proper and legal. I think we've done that.
Awesome. Okay, all right, anything else?
For me?
No, just, I think that's about it.
We need an amendment before we have an emotion, right?
Yeah, that prove everything that's within this except to, that the county administrator amount of 107,200 be put into restricted funds.
Okay.
Is that what we're looking for?
No, no, I think that, so I think that one's fine, leaving it because it does go into a restricted personnel fund, that one already does, because we don't have a position.
The 250.
The 250 and the 10.
The 250 for motor pool emergency.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
And then the 10,000 for the Sheriff's Department safety notification system.
Yeah.
There are a few potential overtime issues related to flood and everything, but we'll deal with that in July. If we, once we have more, better idea of those.
Okay, so we'll deal with that in July, and possibly the justice. Okay, so then with the amendment that we're, so do you want to make that random?
Make a motion, yep, to.
Approve with.
Approve with adding the 250,000 fund balance for motor pool, emergency-based, and 10K for safety notification system.
All right, do I hear a second?
I can second that motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes 3-0, thank you. Thank you, Rudy.
Thank you, so good to be back with you again.
Yeah, it's good to see you.
Ready to do some wrestling?
All right, moving on, item number six, approve a resolution recognizing May 14th through 20th, 2023 as Utah County Law Enforcement Officers Week.
It's been relatively quiet, I brought this up this year, it's been relatively quiet, violence against police, law enforcement throughout the country. And I say relatively quiet, there has almost at least, what, three times a week, the last couple of weeks, we see enormous amount of violence happening in various cities throughout the country. And at any of those seem to be random, as they do. I keep thinking about the law enforcement that are trying to help maintain the peace and control the violator. But at the same time, I think of the history, recent history of over even governments, not Utah fortunately, but even governments are trying to defund law enforcement, as if they're the cause of the problem, without recognizing it's the people themselves are the cause of the problem by how we conduct ourselves on a day-to-day, and we encourage some of this violence against police because of some bigotry that we've, for whatever reason, have been rooted in, growing up or from family or from friends elsewhere. So I thought it was important to reiterate the resolution for this year, with that in mind, of the Utah County Support of Law Enforcement. And if that, if it's may, I'll just go ahead and read that resolution.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, this is in support Utah County Law Enforcement Officers, so this would be our deputies and our city police, chiefs of police and our sheriff. Whereas the men and women of our nation's law enforcement agencies are sworn to valor and integrity in the defense of constitutional rights, and in that role they wear uniforms reflecting dedication, duty, service, excellence, and integrity. And whereas they are sworn to protect and defend every citizen and visitor, their homes, places of worship, employment, and the communities in which they serve, whether in ease or in profound difficulties and unexpected dangers. Whereas there are over 800,000 law enforcement men and women officers serving in countless communities across the country, including those officers in Utah County. And whereas these honored professionals in recent years have increasingly become targets for violence by those who seek to overthrow local governments, destroy businesses, innocent bystanders, and who deliberately kill law enforcement officers. And whereas since the first recorded line of duty death in the United States occurred in 1791, more than 26,290 officers have made the ultimate sacrifice, including 147 Utah law. more than 26,290 officers have made the ultimate sacrifice, including 147 law, Utah law enforcement officers. And whereas in 2023, the names of 556 fallen heroes will be added to the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. And whereas May 14th to 20, 2023 is designated as National Law Enforcement Week to remember, recognize and honor peace officers of the law throughout the United States, the state of Utah, and within Utah County. Now therefore, be it resolved that Utah County Board of Commissioners are resolute in support of law enforcement officers, their families, and especially those fallen, and we stand firm with them in protecting the constitutional rights of the people here, within the county, and throughout America. Number two, are firm in support of the men and women in Utah County law enforcement who stand as guardians of peace and protection of our families, homes, businesses, places of worship, to stand in defense of the weak and the oppressed. Number three encourages people of Utah, throughout Utah County to stand with and show support for law enforcement, especially during May 14th to 20, 2023, to include posting United States flags, law enforcement flags, symbols, and to thank officers of the law and their families for their faithful service and sacrifice. And, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be transmitted by the Utah County clerk to the Utah County Sheriff, to mayors and chiefs of police within Utah County. Resolve proclaimed and ordered this third day of May, 2023, Board of Utah County Commissioners, Utah County, Utah. With that, I want to hear it for our under sheriff who is here.
I think he's the only one that stayed with us through this meeting. You're not, you're not like accepting a job somewhere else, are you? Oh, good.
His first thing does not start with R. That was what we figured out this morning.
Yeah. With that seriously, yeah, with that seriously, let's, every time you see a police officer, deputy, please extend a hand and thank them for their, their time. It means a lot.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Okay.
Do you need a motion to approve that?
Yeah, we do.
I will second that motion.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero. Thank you very much. Number 11, approve and authorize the commission chair to sign the notice of creation and the findings of fact, conclusions of law and decisions to create the Leland 2023 Agricultural Protection Area with modifications, approximately 274.3 acres.
Kevin Stinson with Community Development. This was brought before the commission about three weeks ago. It was tabled at that time. And I have not received any questions, but I'm here to answer any questions that you do have. Or if you want, I can do a quick summary as well.
I think we know what we are getting unless you guys have any other questions. I know that maybe Mayor Mendenhall wanted to say something about.
We do have some people here to speak out.
Their stance on the roads.
Yeah.
Mayor never has an opinion about anything.
Would you like to say something, Mayor Mendenhall, since?
So we volunteer you again to come up and?
Yeah, that's my cue. When you say I don't have an opinion, that's my cue. Sorry, you'll forgive me for being underdressed in front of this esteemed commission. We have a river misbehaving and, and we've been all up and down it for, for days and days. And I know I've seen all of you there as well. So appreciate the partnership. I can't, can't thank you enough. It's already been said. Richard, I don't know, where do we pick up the gold star at? Is that in a certain room or? Okay, you got it. Let's, hold on to it. We're still, we're still in the middle of it. So our event is not over. But it, it couldn't have happened as far as the success we're seeing right now in, in the Spanish Fork River that does pass through Spanish Fork and then the county, and then Spanish Fork, and then back in the county. Wouldn't be possible without the county's partnership. So thank you. Thank you for being engaged, involved, helping lift. But it is, it is also weeks and months of, of preparation in that river that, that is going to make a success. The volunteers, the coordination, thousands of volunteers, 8,000 volunteers, over 50,000 sandbags deployed. And Commissioner Gordon mentioned that some of them have been touched. As recently as last night, we, we went over 2,000 CFS in the Spanish Fork River. And we expect to be over that for the next couple of days. And, and that is more water than, than, than people have seen in Spanish Fork in a long, long time. So again, heartfelt thank you from, from a mayor. This is, this is what good, good government looks like when it's, when it combines together to, to help each other out. So. The, the reason why, besides pointing out that, that the Lady Dawn's Golf Team has won the region golf tournament in Spanish Fork, I bring those, those to, that, that notion today. And pointing out that Commissioner Gordon's daughter plays on that team. So she obviously did not learn how to play from him. But, but the Lady Dons, not just in softball, but in golf and, and all the other sports that we participate in, do represent our, our city well to, to the rest of the region.
Do I, do I need to reprimand him for decorum or do I need to commend him for truth?
You've got a gavel. It's never, I used it when you were gone. You didn't know I used it, did you?
No, I didn't.
It might be a good moment to, to rein him in if he gets out of control.
Okay, I was wondering.
Yeah, that was not a misrepresentation.
Did have a girl hit a hole in one Monday, mayor.
There was a hole in one?
Yeah.
Wow.
Okay, I'm being, I hit a hole in one at Hubble Creek. So how about that?
How about that?
Yeah.
Maybe we should have her as our, our principal focus for the next Utah County.
Yeah, we're known, known for a lot of things. I, I, I do hail back to the class of 98 is, is when I graduated. And we didn't win a basketball championship. We didn't, we haven't ever, ever won one of those. A football championship, Brandon was on that football team, never, never. Okay, well, we've won golf championships. We've won, we've won state at golf, back to back in, in, in fact. So anytime you want a history lesson about that.
Because when I think Spanish Fork, I think golf.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, that's not what I'm here to talk about today. I'm, I'm here to, to speak to you in support of, of your agenda item. The, the county agricultural protection area, named the Leland Ag Protection Area. I'm just here to clarify, I hope, I hope that I can come across as clear as possible of the support broadly in Spanish Fork of, of agriculture. Our history down there is of livestock, of farming and agriculture, and it always will be. You want a sign of that? You can, you can come down there today and you'll smell agriculture. It, it is being spread on the.
It's a sweet aroma.
That's right. It's.
It should be bottled.
It's the, it's the smell of money, Commissioner Sakovich. It, it, it is springtime and so you can smell the, the manure spread to, to grow crops this coming year in Spanish Fork. If, if you'd like to join me later, we're headed to, to the county fairgrounds for the Utah live, Utah State Junior Livestock Show as well. That we, we host annually in Spanish Fork along with many, many state, local, even regional events that, that, that revolve around agriculture.
Like diversified economy, you guys have diversified youth, like golf champions and junior livestock.
We can do both in Spanish Fork. That's right. Yep. The, 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 the history of, of, of what we've done there, what we have there, the financial capital that's been invested there, both by the county and by the city, the public's money, I would think you would find a hard time to find anywhere else in Utah County where more public funds have been spent to, to protect and grow the agriculture, the farming, the livestock way than in Spanish Fork. And that partnership with the county is not unnoticed either. We, we appreciate your efforts there. It's an important part of our, our identity of, of who we are. Now, I know this area is, is, is not inside Spanish Fork city limits. Some of it is, is bordering the, the city limits of Spanish Fork. So, so this is in proximity to, to some of, of what's, what's happening in Spanish Fork.
Spanish Fork and the other large farms, I think it's, is it still $200 million in worth of resources we, they produce for Utah County and Utah as a whole?
Oh, yeah, I would, I would say at least, yes. And, and one of those.
Quarter billion dollars worth.
Exactly. One of those largest producers that, that, that you can think of down that way. Every time I run into him, lets me know how thankful he is of, I'm eating at Chick-fil-A five times a week. Mike, thanks for, you know, Chick-fil-A, like I did something for Chick-fil-A, you know? But, but Chick-fil-A in Spanish Fork now is a good thing for a lot of people, including the farmers that are producing a lot of what's going on down in, in South Utah County. So what I'm, what I'm, my message I want to get across is both of those can coexist. They can coexist in, in a meaningful way. The, the discussion that's, that's, that's taken place from the city's side of, of wanting to, to have some form of request to say, okay, the roads in this area should probably be looked at to, 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 to possibly be excluded here. Now today, I'm up here to, to let you know that regardless of whether those are included in this area or excluded in this area, the mayor of Spanish Fork is telling you, we're in support of, of this ag protection area. It's, it's important. It's important to the landowners. It's important to their property rights. But it should be made clear that that, that request to have those roads be, be looked at in, in a different manner is not necessarily for some, some angle that the city would be trying to play with any landowner, with the county, or, or anything else. It's simply a matter of, of safety. You think about the safety aspect of it. There are property owners in close proximity to this area on the east side of, of I-15 there that are not included in this ag protection area. They're, they're maybe already annexed into the city. They are actively looking for a buyer or they already have one. And development plans have come in front of the city multiple times to look at possibilities. They have every right to do that, just as the, the farmer has every right to continue to, to, to farm that ground. That's personal to me in the way that my grandpa Gull owned the, the ground on North Main Street where the Utah County Jail sits. It's a pretty important area of the county, pretty important area of Spanish Fork. He sold that farm ground to the county many decades ago. It makes him no less of a farmer that he sold that ground and bought, bought other farm ground and continued to farm until the day he died. So, so development, the, the, the property rights of somebody to be able to make that decision is just as important of a right as somebody that wants to, to continue to farm. My concern about safety and, and the road situation there is simply that as those properties do develop and whether it's commercial, industrial, residential, whatever's coming into those properties that makes sense for good planning. I hope the, the folks in this ag protection area continue to farm for generations, multiple generations if, if they wish. So you can imagine in those areas, as, as other properties develop, in the, in the recent future, in the near future, you could have Teslas trying to get by the same road as a combine or a baler, right? Head into another field. And if that's a, if that's a pretty skinny county road with just a ditch bank on the side, one of them might end up in the ditch. One of them might end up hitting each other. So the simple, the simple request is not one of the city to say, hey, we want to take your ground. Hey, we want to buy your ground. Anything like that. If you do the, if you do the, the measurement of, of a lot of those roads from what fence to fence is now, that's about 40 feet. If somebody wanted to develop a lot of the utilities that, that, that might work in that area can be inside that 40-feet threshold. But if somebody wants to develop on a side or other side or both sides, then you're talking about a 60-foot road width. So we're not talking about gobbling up a lot of farm ground, a lot of useful, productive place that, that, that things are going. It was, it was mentioned in a, in a previous meeting, I'm not sure if it was this meeting or another, but it was, well, if the city wants to do that, the city should come talk to us about it. This is the city coming in and talking to you about it. We didn't request this ag protection area. It was requested by, by landowners to be in there. So in the response to that request, this is us trying to be proactive in that way. The only financial situation that, that comes to mind about, about something like this and, and having roads excluded from the area is that if, if this generation doesn't and the next generation doesn't, but say the kids of the kids of the kids in, in this area want to sell their land and develop. I know we've tried to create it and it should be this way, that you could get out of the ag protection area just by saying, I want out. I'm out now and let's go. But from what I've seen as, as a banker of, of quite a few years before doing the job I do now, is that anytime a land, a developer or a purchaser can look at a piece of land and say, oh, that's a, that's another hoop I got to jump, jump through. Even though it might be a small hoop, that's something else I got to do. That's another step. You're going to see a financial, u, u, usually a financial component related to that step. So, so it isn't necessarily that, again, I don't, I don't want it to be misconstrued at all that it's the city's way of saying, this is a way we can get ground for free or grab any ground for, for, for anything. That road, those roads aren't built unless, unless development happens, unless people sell and, and, and want to do something else. And they have, they certainly have the right to. But regardless, I wanted it on the record today that Spanish Fork is in support of this ag protection area, whether the roads are included or excluded, but it should be on the, on, on the record that, that it's a safety issue. That's the request that we're asking for. There's a couple of key issues why we're asking for that. And if it doesn't happen, then it doesn't happen. But at least we're on the record talking about what those, what those issues are.
Thank you.
That's why I'm here.
Yeah, I know we get, we get calls on at least a weekly basis from folks down in that area that there isn't enough room for a truck and a horse on those roads. There isn't enough room for the kids that are walking on the road because there is no shoulder to the road. Kids being teenagers, there's, there isn't enough room for the teenagers and the cars. I know when I lived in that area, there more than one time, a teenager walking on the road was hit at night and died. So I know there is a safety issue on those roads that we, they don't have shoulders. If teenagers are walking to their friend's house, they're on the road. If people are riding their horses, they're on the road and there really is a safety issue. The one question that I've got for, for the staff is if the roads are exempted, does that mean we could widen the road while still keeping all the land in farm protection? So if we exempted the roads, does that mean that the farms, we can still protect the ag and we can protect the farm? But if we have to widen a road for safety, that it doesn't affect those farms?
So, so ag protection doesn't prevent you from developing anything that's allowed in the underlying zone? So you could still widen those roads. Either way, you'd have to go to the landowners and, and purchase that property and buy it from.
Yeah, yeah, obviously either way we just have to purchase the property.
You just have to have the home, the, the landowner's permission. Out of that, you could do more of a, a taking.
Richard, you coming up? Yeah, I wanted Richard also to point out like county road potential. We talked about that this morning in our meeting.
Let, let me, let me answer a question from Commissioner Gardner first. So our Lofer Mountain Parkway project, we have a parcel up there, it's the All Red Orchard that's in an ag protection area that we are in, in negotiations to buy a strip of that property that's still in the ag protection area for the road widening. It's simply a negotiation with the landowner in order to do that. So that, it's not, it's not a, something we have to do to additional to, to pull it out. I think it comes into play and maybe this is where Rob will go if we got into eminent domain.
So, and what, what he's talking about is, and that's assuming that situation with All Red. If they said, you know what, we really don't want to sell it to you. And they're in ag protection and they say, we're not going to sell it to you. Then it becomes a problem for the county to why, because they, 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 they can prevent us from, from acquiring that property. We'd have to go through a process which has not always been successful in, in, in doing that. If it's not in act protection, talking about these just 20 feet from 40 to 60, that additional 20 feet. And we, we, the city or the county would have to go to the property owners again, in both, either scenario, and try to acquire that property, act in good faith, provide appraisals, tell them about the embezzlement's office, all those things we have to do when we try to acquire property. Same with the city. If, if it's in act protection, if they say no, then, be frank with you, the cities or the county is, it's, it's difficult. Almost impossible for us to acquire it. If it is in act protection, excuse me, if it's not in act protection, then we have the ability to do eminent domain. Now, I've been here 23 years, as you know, you've kind of noted that a little bit. We've only done a couple of eminent domains in 23 years. We, we, in fact, we haven't done one probably in, in a decade. So we, we don't do that very often because I think our experiences, my experiences with Richard and Glenn, meeting with the property owners, they usually feel comfortable with our offers. We work through those things and I think we end up to a resolution 99% of the time. And I, I am assuming Spanish Fork City has a similar experience. They don't do a lot of eminent domain either. It's, in conservative county like Utah County, it doesn't go very well.
Only when the landowner has requested it. Only when the landowner has requested it in my time as a result of a benefit, a tax benefit for them.
Yeah, and that can happen too. There's some tax benefits for eminent domain or threat of eminent domain.
Commissioner, you had a question?
Yeah, so we had a conversation this morning about county road potential right-of-way and, you know, I know there were some, you know, conversations and confusion. At one time, there was a map going through Rex's house and.
And specifically, again, Lofer Mountain Parkway, it's the extension of that going north from where our current project ends at 8,000 South or SR 164. I think some of the confusion that came about is, as the, as with most transportation master plans, it's a fairly wide fuzzy line on a map. And the alignment that the county had versus the line that the city had, they were intended to be the same road, but they were not exactly in the same alignment. We have met with the city, we looked at where that alignment would be. That wide fuzzy line showed going through Rex Larson's house, that is not where that alignment is planned for. It's intended to swing to the west and stay away from all of the existing homes that go through open land. But again, that, that project is several years out, we don't have any funding for it. We would love to build work with the landowners as we have the opportunity, whether it's through corridor preservation funds to acquire the land, or if we get to a project that's funded, we'd do just like we are on our current project and go do the appraisals and go through negotiations like what Rob just mentioned with those landowners.
If it's not funded, is it on like a vision map or is it on?
It is, it's actually in Phase 2 of the Transplant 50 Plan with MAG.
So we're looking at at least 20 years out.
So that's, Phase 2 would be 20, 2030 to 2040. Yep, so.
Okay.
Or 2033 to 2043, but yeah, ish, somewhere in that timeframe, 10-plus years out.
That was helpful this morning, thank you.
Thanks.
Well, for me, you know, it's, I know it's good planning, what Spanish Fork's asking to do, but I've looked many of these farmers in the eye and they've said, we have not been unreasonable when you built Mountain Lofer Parkway, and we will be reasonable with you in the future. And I said, that's great, as long as we're dealing with, with even your children or your children's children the same manner. And I appreciate Mayor talking about property rights, and, and so I'm inclined to, to say that we approve it as is, and, but I would be open to any other conversations.
I have none. Everything that the mayor expressed makes perfect sense, and I'm fully supportive of it.
I think everybody agrees that we're fine with the ag protection area, we were just potentially trying to, I mean, we all complain about the red tape of government. Red tape of government increases the cost of housing, it increases taxes, it increases the cost of living here. And I think this was just an attempt to say, hey, in the future, this is some red tape that we don't want to have to, have to get through. But if people, if the people demand red tape in government, then we shall give them what they ask for.
Yeah.
No matter what I'm, yeah, I agree.
Very well.
In this case, owners' rights are protected, and we can allow us to address it later on, and they can get out of it if they wish later on.
Yeah, yeah. Looking for a motion?
Yep.
I would make a motion to approve an, no, item number 11. Approve item number 11.
I can second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, that passes 3-0. Thank you.
If we could get some clarification, there were about four or five different points on that staff report of what is included, what isn't. There were some parcels that wanted to be in, some that wanted out, and then the roads were broken out, specifically which ones wanted in and out.
So. I would say, the ones that the, my inclination would be, the parcels that the parcel owner wants to be in, I would say yes. If the parcel owner doesn't want to be in, then I would say no. And we would just, and we include the roads.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is that what you meant?
Correct. We did not exclude the roads.
Correct, we did not exclude the roads, and only for the property owners that want it.
Does that make sense? Was that clear?
As mud.
I think so.
Okay, all right.
You keep asking me about the fifth and the fifth.
The fifth and the half of a half and the fourth and the fourth.
Thirty River in Spanish Fork.
The fifth of the fourth. All right, the next item that I had circled on here was Commissioner Sakovic, you wanted to hold item number 28.
Yes, last year, this topic came up, and I can't remember if it's the same contract or this extension of it, or something similar to it. But the, I understand what they mean by this, but the Health Disparities and Advancing Health Equity Amendment Number 2 is the title, the contract name for 28. The problem I have is that there is a concurrent publications where health equity is based on the inequable access to healthcare's racist roots. And to me, that is misleading, as misleading as to say that all cops are bad, or all military people want, all they want to do is kill women and children. It is profoundly, what am I looking for, profane, to say it's a racist history, it's not. Individuals have been racist, absolutely, there've been murderers, there's some thieves, there's been breakers of covenants of all sorts. But as a nation, that has been an arm wrestle since its, before its founding. Last year, I think what we did is that, yes, we have to accept this in order to get the funding to provide the health access to residents, regardless of where they live, is to the limits that we're able to do that. But I wonder that, where it says, the contract name says it is Utah County Health Department dash COVID-19 Health Disparities and Advancing Health Equity Amendment 2, that after the word equity, health equity, put in brackets, health access. Because it's universally, what we're trying to do is reach all people for health access. All of us have personal or family or friends who've had difficulties over life with access to healthcare. There's no one that's exempt from that. But the implication at the national level that it's because we've been racist is completely wrong. And I'd like to see us amend the title on our county contract, not the state one, we can't adjust that, but in our agreement, we put in bracket, like we did last year, health access after health equity, in between health equity and amendment 2. Does that make sense, is what I'm recommending?
So I think the, the contract that's up is a state contract, this isn't the county's contract, and so I think that is their wording to change.
It is, yes.
It's a CDC wording, and, and so I, again, the, this is the core mission of public health, it's kind, caring, compassionate work.
Yeah, health access is what we're trying to do, to get as many people as possible to get it.
We're trying to close disparities so that all, you know, we don't pick and choose what public citizens we, we will serve. And so that's the pure intent of this, is to make sure that no one's left, falls through the cracks. It's kind of like flood mitigation, where we're trying to do proactive work to prevent anybody from suffering, you know, you know, death or disease.
No, I get that.
I would like, I would like to point out, though, that statistics and science have shown that for women of color, they die significantly more in childbirth, even after we have adjusted for socioeconomic status, zip code, neighborhood, health insurance, et cetera, et cetera. It is twice as dangerous for a woman of color to have a baby in this nation than it is for a white woman. And it does not matter if they are on welfare, it does not matter if they're, if they live in what zip code they live in, even after we have adjusted for every single socioeconomic factor, women of color die twice as likely after childbirth than a Caucasian woman. So that's one. And two, there's also a disparity, that they have done studies, once again, it does not matter after you adjust for socioeconomic status, zip code, ethnicity, a woman who shows up at a, an emergency room complaining of pain receives care, it takes twice as long for her to receive care than if a man shows up and complains of pain. So even as much as I agree with you, in theory, the facts do not, do not show that in healthcare that there isn't a bias. There absolutely statistically, scientifically is a bias, particularly for women of color, and they die at twice the rate of Caucasian women, even after we have adjusted for every socioeconomic and status and zip code. This is actually well-known in the health industry, it is, it is well-known in, particularly in fetal and maternal care, and it's absolutely, completely unacceptable. And this is something that we should look at, because right now, we have about 20% of our population is Hispanic here in our county. Over the next 20 years, that is projected to go up to a third of our population, and I would love a Hispanic woman to be able to walk into Utah Valley Regional Medical Center and know that she is going to have the same care when she delivers a baby as a Caucasian woman, and today, that's just simply not the case. And it's not just here, it's nation, and it's not just nationwide, it's globally, it happens in the UK, it happens in Canada. For some reason, we have not studied this enough. So as much as I totally agree that we should not assume that every person is racist, and as much as I do not agree with CRT, in this case, the science and the statistics show that women of color die twice as often, and I think that we absolutely should make sure that they are just as safe in healthcare.
From my observations, whenever I bring some family member or I go in for some extended infection, everyone is seems, is, appears to be treated equally and has these equal access regardless of their ethnicity. So from a one-on-one perspective here and elsewhere that I've lived, to me, there, there has not been a disparity except on rare occasions, and when brought to their attention, they generally address it.
Yeah, I wish, I wish the statistics showed it.
That study is confusing to me because it's not what I have seen, and, and there may be other factors that affect this, I don't know the answer.
Well, and that's actually what we're trying to do, is we're trying to study what those factors are that affect this.
Here, what I'm trying to say is just make it universal, health access, it's not based on racist roots. That I reject, because I grew up in a multi-ethnic background in the East Coast, and where I've ever lived in the military, it's always been a blend of all kinds of ethnicities.
Right.
And so I reject the idea that, that our healthcare system wide is racist at its core.
I wish the statistics, I don't think it's showing that it's racist, because we don't know why the women of color are dying at twice the rate, but that's the whole point. And the fact that we have women of color dying at twice the rate as Caucasian women, and we don't know why, like, y'all, it's 2023, why the hell don't we know why they're dying at twice the rate? Like, maybe we should do some studying into this.
That's because humanity is such a fluid environment, we change from personality to personality from year to year, from day to day.
Truly, the intent of this is for us to ensure that we can find, you know, we want to educate, we want to heighten awareness, we want to do everything we can to make sure that, that maybe it's a hearing impaired mother that lives in Cedar Valley that has poor access to care or something like that, whatever we can do to close gaps in health improvement, we want to do that, and that's what the intent of this.
And that's why I'm trying to use the more universal term, a health access, so it's universal for everyone, regardless of your height, weight, color, location.
My point is, even when we have equal access, women of color die twice as often as Caucasian women when it comes to fetal and maternal care. I can't, I don't know about other areas, but at least in fetal and maternal care, access is not what's causing the problem.
And so, and so our work is, in public health, it's just that, it's public, we serve everyone in our jurisdiction, and we're just trying to identify anything that might be contributing to disparities, and we're trying to close those gaps.
Exactly, that's why if you would put in brackets after that title, health access, because that's the intent, that everyone has access to it.
So we can, we can approach the Department of Health and Human Services and see if that can be added, but the, the, this is the last time we were able to change language because that was an amendment to, we were extending to a.
It was the research program with BYU, right?
It was with BYU, correct. And so we were able to change the language, this is not our contract, this is one, this is our, like, the parent contract for the funding we receive for it. So I don't believe that, that, from my experience, that we change, that we can change the title.
Unless, unless within the contract language, we can include the phrase, health access is the objective of this, is universal access.
So we're, the intent, though, I can't stray from the mission of public health, I can't stray from, this is at the heart of what we do, and so if, if whatever we call it, we're still able to do the important work of public health and, and making it so that we can just, you know, close those gaps of health improvement.
We would have to table it, right? If we were to go back, and we don't, we're not inclined to table it.
No, I don't want to table, I want to, I want to accept this, I just want to have the understanding that it's not based on racist issues.
And I'm hearing him say we can't change it.
That's, that's my, that's my belief, and I, I think the attorneys would say the same thing.
Yeah, Ben Vanoy covering for Zachary Zundle, who's also online, he can chime in as well. We can reach out to the state and see if they're willing to change that terminology, but I think what Eric's saying is, until then, we have to take it as is. If you'd like, the attorney's office and Eric can go and make that request.
I think we'd accept it and make the request simultaneously.
That's what we heard, yes.
Okay. I think that's a great motive if you want to make that motion.
And then I'll make that motion that we recommend that the title would include health access, however you want to include that, with brackets, a slash, whatever, but to accept agenda number, what is it, 28?
Eight, yeah.
Yeah, and 28. Okay, I'll make that as my motion.
Second?
It's been moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes 3-0. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Eric, thank you.
I think that brings us to.
On to item 47?
Close session. All right, that concludes the public portion of our meeting, thank you.